Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Today is Monday, October 28th, and this is a regular meeting of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education. I'd like to go ahead and call this to order. Could someone please read the approval of the agenda?
Yep, I move that the agenda of Monday, October 28th, 2019 Board of Education Meeting be approved as set forth, and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Roll call action. Director Chikobo, Director Anhal, Director Jansen, Director Laberty, Vice President Meisterling.
Hi. Thank you. So now I'll turn it over to Noreen Bush for a superintendent report.
Thank you very much, Vice President Meisterling, and thank you for guests for attending this evening. We have had another busy couple of weeks here in Cedar Rapids. First, just a reminder, in a week from now, a week plus one day, we have an election day. So just a reminder to our constituents that November 5th is not just a board election day, it's also our revenue purpose statement election. That language will be on the ballot, and that's just a reminder to everyone to get out and vote, and we hope that you do so. Your voices matter, and we encourage you to... These folks up here are volunteers, all of you are volunteers, who were courageous enough to put your name on a ballot, so thank you for doing that, and it's that opportunity, again, for our community. So, just a reminder, November 5th, get out and vote. Cedar Rapids educators have been in the news. This is Ms. Granadilo, Granadilo, from... Dillo?
Deo.
Deo, oh, it is a Spanish pronunciation. You know, Gabby's so sweet, she's never corrected me. So, she is a champion. She has been math, science teacher at McKinley. She now works at Grant Wood AEA as an induction coach for new teachers, so we still have, of course, a relationship with Gabby, but Gabby has received a very rare honor. She's been awarded the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. As that representative from the state, she's been in Washington DC, and just an amazing educator that we have here in Cedar Rapids, and so congratulations to Gabby, and we are honored that she continues to serve our district as an induction coach. Secondly, we have Stacy Haynes-Moore, Dr... All the kids call her Dr. HM. Stacy has also been the recipient of an award recently, the Rod Vale Journalism Educator of the Year Award. Only one person in the state receives this every year, and Dr. Haynes-Moore's been the recipient. She's been a longtime English educator at Kennedy High School, supporting our journalism program there, but also she is now a member of the district curriculum team, as well as a curriculum lead in English Language Arts, so reading our... or leading our secondary education teachers and curriculum, as well as she still has her foot in the door as a teacher at Kennedy, so congratulations to Stacy for sure. And then, our green team coordinator, Christine Sorenson, was presenting to Green Drink CR recently about the district's environmental sustainability efforts, and our efforts were recognized by that team, and so thanks to Christine and her leadership, and all the members of our green team focusing on sustainability efforts across our district, and of course, as you know, we have a magnet school that specifics... specifically focuses on sustainability at Cedar River Academy. And finally, a thank you to CREA and other members of our... throughout our district. CREA led a charge to have our first trunk or treat at Kingston Stadium across the district, and so we had, I think, 13 vehicles total that were decorated, and we had, from throughout the district, over 200 trick-or-treaters come out yesterday. It was a beautiful afternoon for trick-or-treating. Much... looks much better than what Thursday night's going to look like, and so, at least for those 200-plus trick-or-treaters, they got a good weather, and parents too, bright sunshine, it was a really nice event. So, thanks to that team for putting the event together, and I imagine it might become an annual event.
Very nice, thank you very much. Next, I ask for any board reports. Not a one? Okay, then. Let's move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. I do have two requests to address the board this evening. I'll ask Vanya Kasov to come up, and please state your name and address for the record, and just a reminder, you have five minutes, and a timer will start for you, and this is a time for you to express comments, it is not a time for dialogue with the board. Thank you.
Hello. President, Vice President, member, and the committees and people involved. My name is Vanya Kasov. Oh, my address, I'm sorry, I forgot that. My address... Sorry, I moved too much. My address is 3410... Orile? Oriole? It's like the bird, like the bird Oriole. Court, northeast. Not too far from here. About a mile from here. Not that far at all. All right. I'm a teacher for most 12 years now. I'm an educator, and I teach American Sign Language in another state, online, and in Illinois, and here, at a community college. I've been an educator in a high schools, and now I'm teaching through an online curriculum for 17 elementary students, and they're all hearing students, and they're thrilled to be learning sign, and working with deaf children. Not just with deaf children, but there's a lot of reasons to have exposure for hearing children. Get my notes up. Okay. Two years ago, I was working with a few legislators, and we worked together collaboratively to propose that the bill HF2390 passed with no opposition at all. That bill was approved that American Sign Language would be an option as a foreign language credit, and the legislators sent it off to the governor, and he signed it. The bill allows schools to teach American Sign Language to students for... as an equivalent for a world language, and it's very important for deaf children, and I'm, you know, looking for a job opportunity for my... I'm not myself looking for a job opportunity, but I really want deaf children to have exposure to American Sign Language, because it is truly part of deaf culture and their deaf identity, and it will help them have more visual access to communication, and it will translate to learning and reading English formally. We really need this state for our future, for the future of deaf children in this... in the state of Iowa. Thank you very much for your consideration and listening to me.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Robert Vazini, and again, just state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hello to all of you. My name is Bob Vazini, and 67 Red Wing Avenue Southwest. I am the director of ASL program at the University of Iowa. Before teaching the American Sign Language, I taught at Kirkwood Community College here in town, and I taught the interpreter training program. And we were teaching ASL 1, and they had four children that were learning... One of... it was one of the four options of language that we could have in the children. My friend and I, another deaf person, Vanya's here and Sharon, we are both concerned about the children's learning. It's one of the four languages used in public schools, and we're concerned about that for most... known for many years, has depended on the Cedar Rapids Schools, has depended on Grant Wood AEA to get help with the need of educating deaf children. There's an unspoken rule that deaf children... ASL's not used to be by interpreters and teachers of the deaf in the city in the corridor. They are not... they're not allowed to use it, ASL in the schools... in the schools at all. So, and until last spring, Jackson Elementary School had hired an outstanding teacher of the deaf who believed in the philosophy of bilingual ASL, American Sign Language, and English deaf education. She was one of the best in the state. She had knowledge, credentials, and a master's degree in deaf education. She had an MA in, you know, an MA. She from a well-known, real respected college. She only taught six to seven elementary kids, but used... used ASL. She brought in deaf role models, like me, and several other. The three of us, we were all brought in to bring in stories to show native stor... native sign stories, and the children are encouraged and progressed in their education, but however, this was very short-lived. As soon as the fall semester started, the administrators changed teachers, and ASL was again removed. We were very upset. A parent reached out and asked me, and we met with the special ed administrators, asking if she... we could get her back, and I met with Superintendent Noreen Bush and the special ed administrators, and they sought out other parents who were also upset to see their children's progress be behind again. We asked the special ed teachers, there are... we asked for special... like-minded special ed teachers, such as Grant Wood AEA leaders. Grant Wood has been obviously against the use of American Sign Language with deaf childrens, and against hiring teachers who have a preference for American Sign Language, and are against deaf culture in the schools, and that has been fairly well-known. Who has anybody's culturally identified for a few weeks. So, once again, we're going to meet again, but in the past few weeks, I have not heard This does not show that we are working on giving deaf children education option... the best educational options that they can have, nor using the current best... national best practices. Iowa has 3,000 deaf and hard-of-hearing kids from the ages of 0 to 18, and a large number of them are here in Cedar Rapids. Let's stop the school-first decision and move towards a child-first approach. Every child is different and has different challenges. Some have no or known our very basic language knowledge before coming into school. Will you please set up a committee to... of different representatives to reform deaf ed in Cedar Rapids?
Excuse me, your time is up, Mr. Vazini. Thank you.
Can I get one... the last sentence in? We need to include deaf members, deaf educators, and ASL specialists that are not employed or consulting at the Cedar Rapids Schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Yes, please hand that to the board secretary, Laurel. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we're going to move into our consent agenda, and I ask at this time if anyone wants to pull any item for separate consideration, or if you have a comment on an item.
I just wanted to pull BA 20000602.2. It's the Food and Nutrition Fund Report, and as I was going through this, thinking about this being my last full board meeting after 12 years, how excited I was to read the things that were going on for our kids. Fresh fruit, fruit and vegetable programs. There are sites throughout our district of kids that are getting fresh fruit and vegetables, offering breakfast in the classrooms in a number of our schools, breakfast carts, Boys and Girls Club helping us with evening meal program, so our students are getting breakfast, lunch, and dinner at six locations throughout our school district, which is pretty amazing to me. Students throughout some of our buildings that are the highest free and reduced lunch schools are getting meals at no charge, including Metro High School, Franklin, McKinley, Roosevelt, Wilson, Arthur, Cleveland, Garfield, Grant Wood, Harrison, Hiawatha, Hoover, Johnson, Kenwood, Nixon, Taylor, Van Buren, Wright, and Polk Alternative School. This is pretty amazing, and so, sometimes it's not always obvious, I think, what's going on in a district, and we try and talk about transparency and things, and this is all public information, but it's more than the bricks and mortar sometimes. It's about what the people are doing in the buildings and the administrators, I'm here at ELSC and their staff, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to Food and Nutrition for all the effort they've done, and how much the difference that makes in our kids' lives and some of their families, so, thank you. That's it.
Appreciate that comment, John. Any other comments or items for consideration? Okay, this is a roll call action due to the personnel report. Director Anhal.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Laberty.
Aye.
Director Chikobo.
Aye.
Vice President Meisterling.
Aye.
Next, I'm going to turn this over to Rod Dooley to talk... give us an update on our strategic plan.
Thank you, and I am really excited about this presentation today, and before I dive in it, this work and what we're going to highlight today is really a reflection of your leadership. All of the great work that you have done to help align the organization, to set priorities for the organization, to release funding and resources for the organization, to make progress on our strategic plan. So, this really is, again, highlighting all the great work that you have helped lead in the organization. So we start here back kind of with the vision, and it started... and a lot of this work started frankly before I was here. I know even before Superintendent Bush was here, even though she played a part in helping formulate this theory of action, not even being a member of the team here, so, a lot of this work started with her as well.
I'm having a really hard time letting Rod talk right now.
She really is.
I'll pull the mic away if she's carrying it.
But that work then led to our vision, and, Noreen, you have to do it every year.
It is true.
And I know not everyone is into this, but those who are new to our audience, our vision about Every Learner Future Ready means that each and every child gets what they need, and we have to adjust along the way as we learn, and to... for them to be ready for each step of... along the way in their path to be future-ready, and that means at the end of the journey that they can make their way into a productive world, and so, every learner...
Future-ready. And so, making sure, again, that every learner, our mission, that they have a pathway, a passion, and a plan for their future, so when they leave here, that they are ready for that next step. From there, from our vision and our mission, we then said, what are the strategies that's going to help us get there? And so we've worked with kind of this strategy on the page, and this year, we've in some ways simplified it and streamlined it a bit to ultimately get to some system indicators around equity and student achievement and graduation rate, so that we know... we can really measure our progress and know where we're going as we go down this journey. All of you know that we said, if we're going to get to this Every Learner Future Ready and making sure that students have this personalized learning experience, we've got to make sure that in whatever building that they're in, that each building is high-reliable, so that every building, they can get what they need in order to be successful. And so, bringing this... transforming kind of our school improvement process through high-reliability schools framework with a focus on equity. We want to make sure, even though there are five levels here, we look at that through an equitable lens. So, I... this chart is just really exciting for me, because this chart begins to get... I know in most of the board meetings, I kept hearing, what are the metrics telling us? You know, how are we measuring this? And so, here you can see, and I'm not going to cover all of them, but starting at the top, a 5% closure in our gap on the FAST data. I mean, that is something to really, really celebrate. We talked about this achievement or opportunity gap that we had, and that it was getting bigger and bigger, and now it's getting smaller. So, again, this great work that you have led and kept us focused on that. The second one, 26% decrease in suspensions this year. I mean, that's huge. The buildings are putting structures in place, looking at alternatives to suspension, doing a great job. 20% growth in students engaged in multiple pathway courses of work. I mean, if you remember, earlier, we were talking about AP was really the target, but now we've got many options for many students, and the students really are beginning to engage in that. Increase in graduation rate, and then the last two's really around staff engaging in the intercultural development, as well as our new instructional framework, the new art and science of teaching. So, those things really are how we're beginning to deliver on this vision. Some other things and structures that have been put in place, the multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS, we have been trying to make sure that we have these tiered systems in place in each of our buildings, but we also added the mental health support. And that's huge to begin to say, we realize that students have different needs, and we need to make sure that we have services and supports in place for them. And I know that sometimes, as we've brought all of these different partnership agreements to the table, that you've tried to hold us accountable to what are these things and why are we doing it. A lot of it has been around that mental health support, so, again, thank you for your support in that. On the academic side, John Rice and his team, along with the rest of the executive team, has really looked at, how are we going to make progress to make sure that we are teaching the standards, that we are assessing students on those standards, and ultimately, how are we engaging students in a personalized way with where they are in each of those standards? And so, we've got this roadmap in place, where it's not all there yet, but we have a roadmap that's going to get us there. Now, look at this chart. Now, you think about all the innovative learning programs, the five magnet schools with Johnson, STEAM Academy, Kenwood Leadership Academy, Cedar River Academy, Taylor, Roosevelt Creative Corridor Business Academy, and McKinley STEAM Academy. I mean, that is a great, great alternatives for our students in their learning. And then look at all of these other innovative programs. You know, Iowa Big, you've got some of the blend... blended programs at Nixon and at Jefferson, and then the Kite program at Franklin, Metro also STEAM program. So, we've got great innovative programs all over the place, and again, your leadership has mattered in this, in driving us to think about things more innovatively. Some other alternative programs, our homeschool program has been refreshed, and that is growing, and is... you know, we've always had kind of a wait list in homeschool. Now we're beginning to get those families in there. The Virtual Academy this year, and then, for some of those that are more at risk, the Iowa Net High Academy. You know, I have a great story of a student last year in the Iowa Net High Academy who was just struggling to make it to school, and had all kinds of challenges around that, and we looked at it and was actually probably not going to graduate. Credits were... she was not progressing with her credits at all. We got her in Iowa Net High Academy, and the feedback from those working with her says, she's not only going to graduate, she's probably going to graduate early. I mean, that's... here's someone who probably would not have made it, and now we put an alternative program in that's going to help her be successful. ELL. You can see the chart of how much growth we've had in ELL students. We've got over 1,100 students throughout our system, and so, we've expanded our program over the course of this strategic plan to make sure that those students had access to the supports they needed in their home schools, so they didn't have to travel across town. They could actually participate in extracurricular activities in their home schools because of the expansion of the programs here. And while this technology roadmap of just making sure that we get technology in the hands of students, and so this year, we know that we started with the high schools, and over 5,000 devices were deployed this year, and they have them in their hands, that they can use both in-school, at-home, for their learning. And we also made sure that folks had access to the internet, and again, great from your leadership, because I know for years that was a topic for the board. When were we going to get there? You can see that we're finally on that path. And all this has been around equity, which has, again, been something that the board has talked about and has been driving. Equity and access, making sure that students had the things that they needed in order to be successful. And then you also talked to us about our workforce, making sure that we were continuing to evolve the workforce to make sure that we were beginning to match the demographics of our students with our workforce, so, diversity recruiting strategy. And then we also have brought in some critical roles throughout the district to make sure that, from a security and safety perspective, that we had a focus there. The mental health, that we kept talking about behaviors, we've been talking a lot about and hearing feedback from staff, that we've got some challenging behaviors, so we made sure that we brought in other resources. Registration, you know, our system is... having the data in our system is critical, so that when we run reports and we look at our data, we want it to be clean, and so, putting a registrar in place, the data analyst, I mean, that's... that's been huge throughout the district, so that we have access to real data that we can make decisions on. Pause for a minute, the facilities master plan. You, as a board, realize that where we go in the future is really, really important, and we need facilities that's going to take us into the future, and you... you commissioned a team to go study it, and they came back with a recommendation that you approved, and we're now down that path of really bringing new facilities into the district, these great learning environments that students are going to be able to thrive And then finally, you know, our mission really does talk about, how are we going to make sure that they're ready? Not just ready academically, but they're ready with all of the those 21st century skills, and so the profile of a graduate has been developed, and we're beginning to think about, how does that get embedded throughout the entire system? We don't wait till their high school years to focus on this, but how do we start even in kindergarten, thinking about how should students be learning and exhibiting these skills? So, a lot of great work. I'm proud of the work that... any one of them could have got up here and said this. I just get to stand up and talk about all the great things, and again, it really is due to your leadership. So, that's our story.
Thank you, Rod. Let's open it for comments and questions. Gary, you look like you have one.
I do. I want to go back to, I don't know, this high reli... The... this slide deals with 5% gap closure on FAST reading, but then the next one is the 26% decrease in suspensions. There are lots of ways of decreasing suspensions, and... And I believe we, from the narrative that I'm hearing from staff, we're not necessarily decreasing the amount of behavior or problems within. We may not, they may not get sent to the office and they may not end up with a suspension, but it is still becoming even a large problem, this from what I'm hearing. So we can tell that we've got a 26% decrease in suspension, but I'm not sure that that really reflects the overall ability of what we're doing with dealing with the students. Not suspending them doesn't necessarily make the problem go away, or does it not necessarily help them? You go on earlier, talk, or later, talk about hiring and I think there's a correlation, some went into that too with, we're focused on rightfully on hiring a diversity staff, but are we doing it? In the process, are we not being able to focus? We have a lot of openings, particularly in permanent subs, particularly in some areas that are causing a great deal of strain on current staff. And right now, I see that as a priority. Not that we forget about diversity, hiring diversity staff, but we need to have the adequate staff to supply. And the other, what's missing, I think, from this is, where's the report on teacher satisfaction, on parent satisfaction? Where are we heading? I hate to sound like a downer because we are, we've asked for some metrics and you've shown some metrics that we're moving in a positive direction, but also data can be misleading too, so.
Well, I think good comments and good feedback. I don't want you to take away that there aren't still issues and challenges in the system and a lot more work to be done because there is. And just some of the things that you pointed out are absolutely things that we're focused on because we know that there's still a lot of improvement that needs to be done in the system. We are making some progress, but we know that there's a lot more to be done.
Thank you. John?
Just responding to that too, and I've followed up with Dave Nicholson right before this. So again, the by far largest growth in our staff and our salaries has been for teachers and for paras. And so hiring staff at the classroom level and focusing on the mental health, those things will make a difference and we know that. So, you know, we've seen the data, we do the surveys and it's been in different places across the board over the 12 years I've been on here, but it seems like the administration is listening and trying to make a difference based on what they're hearing. And I think Rod, I would agree, as you've said, that there continue to be challenges, but you have a systematic way at this point of trying to address those, which I totally appreciate. The other thing that I would just say on this is, again, this being my last full board meeting after 12 years, I remember coming onto this board and being told it's just a meeting once a month. And I've found out over the last 12 years, it's a lot more than that. But I think as long as we all keep in mind that it is really about the kids, we have the challenges of the budget. You know, the pie is shrinking from the state and the demands are all that much greater from requirements from the federal government, from the state government. Our parents expect more, our citizens expect more, the baggage that some of our kiddos are coming to us with and the families is growing and we know all of that. But again, I think as long as we keep our focus on the kids. So you mentioned the facilities and I'll just say, you know, we've gone around and around about facilities, but again, I think as long as we're transparent about it, we may not always agree on everything that's being done, but as long as we can converse about it and again, keep that focus on the kids, this will be great. And I think that's why Cedar Rapids Community School District is so awesome. You've got the diversity, you've got people that genuinely care, you've got an awesome administrative team, but you've got the best teachers and paras and support staff I can imagine anywhere. And I've been to a lot of school districts and I can't imagine it would be any better. And so, thank you. You pointed out a lot of the great stuff that's going on and you've acknowledged that there are still challenges and opportunities, which there will always be. And so I'm grateful that people are running for the board, hopefully for the right reasons and not for single issues or whatever that might be. But it's a lot more to all of this and thank you for pointing all those things out.
Good job. Raphael?
So it excites me to see our plan simplified in, you know, these clear terms that have metrics associated with them. And I realize and recognize that it's a culmination of a lot of time, energy, and work by a lot of people, not just the board. And we were there to kind of provide the overall vision, but it took administration, it took buildings, it took staff within those buildings to ultimately make a lot of these things happen that we're very proud about. So I kind of see it as, we can't necessarily pat ourselves on the back because we can always do better, right? We can continue to keep that growth mindset. So looking at this and seeing this plan, kind of, there's two things to it. So the first part, how are we making this known? How are we letting people know this is the direction we're going? These are the things we've done, these are the metrics that we have in place. So I'm talking about within buildings to parents, to, you know, even students, or even to some of the ELL families that we're talking about. How are we making this known?
So I would say, especially as we have refreshed the strategic plan, we have brought all of leadership together and our superintendent has really gone through that, walked them through that. We have taken all of our teacher leaders through that because we want to make sure that there is great understanding and alignment. And it's also showing up in building's school improvement plans. As they are establishing goals, those goals are aligned to the strategic plan and those big system indicators. So we're having that communication and that conversation, both at the district and the building level. The next step really will be as we go into our next cycle of HRS and the assessments that buildings will give their stakeholders, their parents and their community information around it so that they understand it. Because then we're going to engage them in feedback around that through that whole process.
So I think even still now, like when I walk into some building, I think I still see sometimes our older, you know, poster of, you know, the, some of the things that we had, right? So I guess I envision something like this being out in buildings and in situations where, you know, there are other people that speak other languages, making that effort to put it there so that it's clear, understandable, and can be read. So that's one piece of feedback that I would share. The other thing, I mean, we know the direction that we're headed and, you know, we're going to miss, you know, Mary and John and Kristen, but even as board members now, what else can we do or to the, you know, next group of board members that are coming in? You know, from your perspective or even Noreen, what are the things that we can do? Whether it's, you know, getting with legislators, you know, related to funding or, you know, any of those other things? What are those things that we can take away to do better, to make it so that our district is a district that other districts come to to say, how are you doing this? How can we do this? How can we model after you? Do you have any, anything to suggest?
So the celebration slide of the data, that's, so to your point, we already have districts coming to us saying, what are you doing that moved your fast data that way? Especially as a complex system as we have, there are districts that are much smaller than us and maybe have less complexities and they're wondering how we're getting our reading data to move. And so that's a huge celebration. So I think, but for us, it's a shared practices network. So I think that, one, being really clear about the practices that are helping our kids. And I do get a little competitive like you, Director Jacobo, in that absolutely I want folks to be looking at Cedar Rapids as the destination location, but I also know that our learning has also come from other places too. And so making sure that we're being really clear about those shared practices. But secondly, I think for, as board members, it's continuing to push the vision cast and making sure that we're moving towards that vision. And to, you know, Director Anholz's concerns, we're not the only ones in the boat of hiring or struggling with hiring very challenging positions. Every Monday morning, a little shout out to HR, every Monday morning at nine o'clock, we have an orientation for new employees. I try to every Monday morning, get down there at nine o'clock and, because I have to teach them every learner future ready, but also to welcome them. And so today, it's bus attendants, para educators, and some other, and buildings and grounds crew. And so we do have new employees every week. So it's not as though positions aren't being filled, but it's not being filled at the rate that we need it to be filled. And so those are the things that I think legislatively, advocacy for schools to compensate our staff as they need to be compensated, which means that we need the dollars to do that. But being, asking for more money is one thing, but being really clear on what our purpose and our focus is. Our expenditures have gone up, but our funding stream has not. And I think we need to be very clear as a district that this is our story and we're not alone in that story. So we have increased positions in special education specifically, behavior texts, and leadership to support those positions so we can get better at supporting our kids, especially our children with the most significant learning needs. But also, I don't want to lose sight of the innovative work and that's going to take, that takes resources too. And so we just can't lose sight of our beliefs, where we're grounded. I don't think the story's going to change. We have a very clear strategic plan and it has proved results for us in two, in two years. In two years, all of that work, the majority of that is two years' work. I mean, that's huge. But it doesn't mean that we still don't have challenges that we have to face. So I think that is the advocacy.
Okay. Gary?
I just want to comment on Superintendent Noreen's comment. And I know you're working on some kind of a document, paper that we can share with legislators who might not write on, on what our needs are. I know from legislative advocacy for the last number of years, we keep going and saying, we need more money, we need more money. And I think what we, to be more effective, we have to say, this is why. It isn't just, we just don't want an open peggy bank here. This is where we're falling short of board priorities and needs for the district. And it does come down to money and not being supported. So I appreciate that and appreciate your work as we go into, hard to believe, but in a couple of months, those committees will be starting to talk and discuss about budgets. And I know as legislative advocates, we want to be out there saying, as you set your budget, don't forget, this is, if you support public schools, this is what you need to do. So thank you for your efforts. And I don't want to be a complete downer on, there is, there's some great progress, but I just wanted to point out too, that with it, there still is challenges that we need to face.
Those, that fast data is incredible. I mean, we have not seen that needle move for years. So hats off to staff, to our teachers, to our leadership. That is just awesome. If we don't have literate students in our world, we don't have democracy, right? So thank you for doing that. I am curious about where we are with standards-based grading. Where have we, who's left? And do we test that water with higher ed? And do we know that, are students complacent, knowing that they can take that test over and over and over again? So just a little update on that, I would appreciate your comments.
Wow. That's a big one. She's going to help me though. So I would say that standards-based grading and learning, learner-centered assessment is what we've called it here. And I think most of our elementaries have engaged in that work, some of our middle schools and some high school, not complete schools, some teachers in some of the buildings. And I would say that there's good progress with it. Part of it is, I think we had to back up and really work on our guarantee and viable curriculum, which has been the work that's been done over the last year. And then making sure that we have those assessments in place, those unit assessments in place. Because if you don't have those in place, it's very, very difficult to know how students really are progressing in a standards-based system. And so the next step really is after we've gotten now our guarantee and viable curriculum and those standards aligned to standards, we've gotten the unit assessments in, it really will be now, how do we tackle standards-based grading overall? So that's really a to-do for us and I think that it's going to be a couple of year journey. We actually talked with the Marzano consultant today who helped us really think through where we are in the journey a little bit. And that was kind of some of his advice is that you really want to make sure that you've got those other components working really well before you really jump into that. So that, so far, that's kind of where we are, I think, in our thinking around it.
And Rod, you may want to comment on this as well, but also that standards-based reporting is about reporting on the standards being assessed. Then there are practices that support that work. And so I think what would help us probably as a district is to be clear about what it's not. And what, at the high school level, for example, it's not about removing GPA, it's not about removing letter grades. What it's about is reporting the standards that kids are being assessed on. And then with that, it becomes a learner-centered environment, not a grading-centered environment. So for example, you might get an assignment, it's worth 10 points, you get 10 points, you focus on the points and you don't focus on what is it that the learning that I missed? So the reassessment is more about what's the learning that I missed? And if it's important, then we need to reassess that learning. And so that's what, I know that, once upon a time, I left the state and came back and I had to take the Iowa driver's test again. I hadn't taken it since I was 16. And so when I took it, I didn't pass it the first time as an adult. They did allow me to reassess it. I focused on the questions that I missed and then I was allowed to reassess. And really, that's the practice that we're talking about is supporting learning instead of grading, which is a shift. So we will get there over time, but really, I think that especially in the high school setting, we have to be very clear, but also assessing what have been the bumps along the way, along implementation. And I think as Rod's described, it's been organic and we need to be more systemic to support our teachers, especially in our families, and understanding what it is and what it is not.
And I appreciate the comments. This board has always supported standards-based grading since we learned about it years ago. I just want to make sure, and I'm not indicating that it's not, but I want to make sure there's integrity behind it. So I like the background and the approach to systematically putting those measures in place that help you put together a more comprehensive program. But then I also, over the years, I want us to think about how is this being received in, at the higher ed level, at the community college level? I know that there's probably some students are going to be complacent, right? Some teachers that are going to be complacent. And I just want to make sure it's successful for all. And I do like what it's not because there was a lot of assumptions out there that I think parents had a complete misunderstanding about what it was and what it's not. So thank you for that clarification. Any other comments or questions from the board on the strategic plan update? Great work. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Next, we're going to go into board governance and we have a resolution to, well, I'm just going to have John go ahead and read the recommendation as a motion.
Sure. I would recommend that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing and providing for issuance and securing payment of school infrastructure sales, service, and use tax revenue refunding bonds and authorizing the execution and delivery of those documents.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
This is a roll call action. Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Laverty?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Anholz?
Aye.
Vice President Meisterlin? Aye. And next we have a, we're going to move into closed session for two reasons. And John, if you don't mind, I'll ask you to read the motion for the first one.
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, October 28th, 2019, to discuss strategy with district legal counsel in matters that are presently in the litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation as provided in chapter 21.51(c) of the Iowa Code.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Roll call action. Director Laverty?
Aye.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Anholz?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Vice President Meisterlein?
Aye. Thank you. And the next one, John?
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, October 28th, 2019, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual or individuals whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputation and that the individual or individuals has requested a closed session is provided in Section 21.51(c) of the Iowa Code.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
This is a roll call action.
Director Jacobo?
Aye.
Director Anholz?
Aye.
Director Janson?
Aye.
Director Laverdy?
Aye.
Vice President Meisterlein?
Aye. Thank you. Next, I'm going to ask Scott Wing to come up and join us and recognition of a staff member who recently passed.
Thank you. Scott Wing with the Transportation Department. It's with a heavy heart that I ask, we pause tonight to remember our bus attendant, Randy Christensen, who passed away on Wednesday, October 16th. Randy was a Cedar Rapids native and a proud veteran. He was well-known in our community as a devoted umpire, baseball coach, and Yankees fan. He befriended everyone he met and was known to take care of everyone. Even though Randy worked for us for only five short months, his strong work ethic, warm personality, and welcoming smile will be greatly missed. Randy is survived by Bonnie, his wife of 43 years, his children Jeff, Kyle, and Terry, his sisters Peg and Pam, his five grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. As we observe this moment of silence in memory of Randy Christensen, let us remember the lives of the students and staff that Randy has positively impacted as an employee of our school district.
Thank you. Let's take a moment of silence. Thank you, Scott, for sharing.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have no further business before this board. We stand adjourned and we'll move into a closed session. Thank you for joining us this evening.